Welcome to Go Vote Omaha. This is a candidate forum for the Omaha Public Schools Board presented by the League of Women Voters of Greater Omaha. I'm Jerry Simon, a League member and moderator for the forum. The League of Women Voters never supports or opposes political parties or candidates. We present this forum solely for voter education. Here's the format for our forum this evening. Each candidate will have a one-minute opening statement, and we'll follow that with questions and answers. Each candidate will answer every question and have up to 90 seconds to do so. Then we will conclude with a one-minute closing statement by the candidates. We encourage you to call in your questions. The number is on the screen, and we'll try to ask as many of those questions as possible. Our timekeeper will alert the candidates when 30 seconds of time remains and when to stop speaking. Before the candidates did the forum this evening or here for the forum, they drew lots to determine their initial speaking order, and I'll introduce you to them in that order now. We have two candidates in each sub-district, 1, 3, and 7. With us here this evening are five of the candidates. In Sub-District 1, Yolanda Williams intended to be with us but had an unexpected death in the family and cannot be here this evening. So our candidates participating are Carol Crachee, Ben Pearlman, Amanda Ryan, Ricky Smith, and those are our five candidates. Alex Gates is our fifth one. Sorry, Alex. Okay, now we're going to go to our opening statements, beginning with Carol Crachee.
Good evening. I'm Carol Crachee. I'm in Sub-District 7. I am a retired social studies teacher from OPS. I taught for 25 years at Central High. I am also a former union leader for the Omaha Education Association. And I believe strongly in equal schools, quality schools, for all students and quality teachers for all students. And I think it's part of the job of the Board of Education to see that we follow through on that.
Ben Pearlman.
Hi, my name is Ben Pearlman. I'm 40 years old. I work as a prosecutor in Sarpy County. Married, have three children, two are in OPS now, one at Dundee, one at Central. A couple of schools I went to, I graduated from Central in 1994. There's a few reasons I've decided to run for a seat on the Omaha Public Schools Board in Sub-District 3. I'd like to see the communication in the district improve, not only between the district and OPS families, but also within the district. I would also like to see a little bit more accountability between the district and OPS families. From voters that I speak with, some of them question whether or not enough of the money that is being used in the district is being spent in the classroom. And so I'd like to see an accountability to see where all the money's spent. And finally, I'd like the district to do everything it can to retain the best teachers, not only by paying them competitive salaries, but also providing the support that they deserve.
Thank you. Amanda Ryan.
First, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and the community members that are watching. I'm ready for OPS because education is fundamental to everything that I've done and continue to do, whether that's my own education, my career, or my outreach within our community to help bring understanding and respect amongst all the different populations that we do have in Omaha. I'm dedicated to ensuring that our teachers continue to have a seat at the table, making sure that they have an advocate on the board that is going to come to them and ask for their educational opinions on matters that directly impact their careers or their classrooms and their students. And I'm very honored to have the support of the Omaha Education Association in this race, showing that the teachers in my sub-district believe not only in my campaign, but also in trusting that I will have those tough conversations that are needed to happen in order to improve our school system.
Thank you. Ricky Smith.
Hello, my name is Ricky Smith, and I'm running for the Omaha Public School Board, District 1. And what I want to do is to bring some accountability to the school board, and also I want to be able to provide some additional support for our educators as they are educating our students. I have 20 years of experience working within the youth and education field. I have worked at the Boys and Girls Club, Urban League of Nebraska, University of Nebraska at Omaha, and Creighton University. The students that I've worked with in my 20 years are starting to have kids now, and so they see the importance of what a strong school district does. It creates strong communities. I want to be able to also be a very, very open candidate and very, very transparent. And so as you have questions, if you have issues, I want to be able there to support you and your children, so that way we can take the next steps in improving education here in Omaha Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex Gates.
Hi, good evening. I appreciate the opportunity to be part of the forum. My name is Alex Gates. My wife, Jamie, and I have four children, age 10, 8, 5, and 2. My two oldest daughters are in 5th grade and 3rd grade at Wilson Focus School, and my two sons at home are soon to be Edison Eagle Elementary Eagles. I'm running for the OPS Board because I have a vested interest in OPS, and I have a long history advocating for parents and teachers in our school district. I've been president of the Edison Elementary PTA for the last two years. I was vice president two years leading up to that. I'm currently the vice president of the Wilson Focus School PTO. I served two years on the OPS District Citizens Advisory Committee, or Committee, and I've attended school board meetings for years, long before I was a candidate. I'm also in my second year teaching an Introduction to Computer Programming course at Wilson Focus School. My long history as an involved parent has earned me the endorsement from the Omaha Education Association and sets me apart as a candidate. I hope to earn your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to our first question. There have been problems with the change to a new company for bus transportation. Has the OPS Board done enough to resolve the problems? What more should be done? And we'll start with Ben Pearlman.
Well, clearly, not enough has been done to make sure that every student is where they need to be on time. And I'm not entirely sure where the problem exists, but I do have an idea. And one of those places where it exists is between the communication between the folks at OPS who draw up the routing and Student Transportation of America. From what I understand, in Millard, Student Transportation of America designs the routes themselves and implements the doing the routes, the performance of the routes themselves. And we heard through the board meetings that I've attended that the routes were, in this year, for example, were to be given over to the Student Transportation of America at the beginning of August. Sounds like that didn't take place on time. And one solution that I would advocate for is simply starting things earlier. There's no reason why we should be waiting to a week in August, 10 days before school, to make sure that there's enough bus drivers, all the roads are covered, and those sorts of things. So if I were a member of the school board, I would demand that we push things back a week or two at a minimum, and look into what other districts around the country are doing to alleviate some of these problems, such as letting the Student Transportation of America draw up the routes themselves, and also using technology that Student Transportation of America uses around the country, like real-time GPS that's available for parents and students to see.
Thank you. Amanda Ryan.
One of the big issues with this is communication on two levels. Communication between the board, the administration, and the companies that we have contracts with, but then also communication with our parents and community members on the routes that their students are taking and what buses they will be taking. So I think it's something that we still need to be working on, and there's different technology out there to where we can relay those messages to our parents in a more clear manner, and keep them up to date on what buses their students need to be taking, and just keep them on time, and so parents know where their students actually are and where they can find them. As far as communication with the board and administration, that's something that we need to continue to work on in all avenues, whether that's this transportation issue or other issues. As Ben mentioned, there is technology out there, and there are larger school districts that are managing to have transportation being served on the first day of school. We plan our calendars in advance, and recently at a board meeting, we had a sample of two academic years. So we have the ability to start planning ahead and making sure that our students are going to have a successful first day of class.
Thank you. Ricky Smith.
Well, this is really unique to my household because my son didn't get a bus for about three weeks, and it was tough. He actually went to his bus stop the last time when we didn't get a bus and stuck his thumb out to hitchhike to school. And that's just the kind of kid that he is. He's very, very resilient. Our kids are resilient, and they deserve better than to be left out at bus stops. When you have 3,000 kids who miss or are late the very first day of school, that's like misplacing an entire high school. And so everybody here said communication. I agree with communication, but also there needs to be some accountability. You left our kids on bus stops for weeks and weeks at a time. We need to address that and have that accountability piece as a school board. Also, there needs to be a better plan put into place. There needs to be some standard operating procedures in the event that we have emergencies like this. I hope that, and I really do hope, we contacted the police department to let them know that our kids are going to be standing on bus stops. I was alarmed and irate as a parent, and so I'm coming from the parent perspective to know that our kids are standing on bus stops, and then I hear news stories of kids being encountered or trucks pulling up and trying to get students to get into their cars. That's something that we have to take into consideration. We have to provide safe environments in our schools and get our kids to school safely and back home safely. And so planning, accountability, and then at least, at the very, very least, being accountable and holding the people who are responsible for this mistake accountable.
Thank you. Alex Gates.
Yeah, so I was affected by this as well in my family with my daughters and their school bus. One thing that I will point out that, you know, the first time parents were alerted to any blessing issue was 6:00 PM the night before school started. And so just like everybody said here, I'm going to echo, communication is a big problem. We need to make sure that we're communicating effectively with our parents. We have 52,000 students at OPS who speak 110 different languages at home. The targeted robocall and phone call that went out at 6:00 PM the night before was available in English only. So we're doing a disservice. I think that was a reactionary approach when we knew ahead of time that we had the issues. I'll also agree that there's a lot more technology that we can use to better inform parents when their specific route isn't going to be available, and I would like to see more of that. I'd like to see better communication between schools and the busing company as well. I've talked to several building administrators who have offered up frustration, saying that when they need to get a message to the busing company, they have to dial the same number that all the parents do. So that's a frustrating thing when they can't get through. And then finally, I will agree with accountability. This is something that is very important. We're asking the community to put their faith in us to educate their children. We need to own up to the mistakes that we made. We cannot be afraid to admit that we've made mistakes as long as we come forward with a policy that will correct it moving forward. I think one immediate action that we could take is to see about bringing a board member into a committee meeting with the Transportation Department for next year.
Thank you. Carol Crachee.
As I've listened to this at several school board meetings, it seems to me that there's plenty of blame to go around here. Lots of people are responsible for these failures, the bus company, the Transportation Department within OPS, et cetera. But it seems to me that the real problem is communication. How we are communicating with parents, how we are communicating with administrators and teachers, and how all of those things get back to the school board. They were talking about one number for people to call. Instead of having a list of numbers, there should be one number with a small menu. They started talking about a menu the other night, and I'm like, don't make it too long because people can't stand long menus. But I think communication is the real problem, and it's the job of the school board to see that that communication problem is resolved.
Thank you. Here's a question from a viewer. What will you do to allot funds for schools that are most seriously overcrowded? I've seen way too many modular buildings, particularly in disadvantaged areas. Doesn't that lead to truancy or discipline issues? And we'll start with Amanda Ryan.
That definitely does lead to some truancy and discipline issues, but that's also something that we have to look at separately. But to allot the funds, we definitely need to be very mindful of our budget and looking at it very, very carefully, and working with our finance department and how they are doing that. So we all know that with the legislation from this last cycle, that we are no longer going to have that common levy tax, and so that's taking away some funding. And so we really, once again, we have to be very cognizant of how we're spending our money and how we're allocating those funds. So I do work in nonprofits, and we tend to have a very small budget, and so that's something that I bring to the table as a candidate in having to make sure that we're doing everything in a very meaningful way and spending our funds in a way that is going to have the most impact. So it's really looking at that budget and making sure that we are allocating the funds properly.
Thank you. Ricky Smith.
As a board, I think we have to remain accountable again and be mindful that this is taxpayer money. And so building new schools, that's great. Sometimes we have to be very, very transparent and explain to parents, this is the process that we're going to end up going through in order to give you a better renovated building. Some schools will be displaced for a little while while those updates are being made. But it was good to hear that the bond money that we have currently in place is being spent correctly, and we are on schedule with the building of additional schools and the upgrades that we're making. And so making sure that we continue to stay on that path of providing our kids quality education, a safe environment to learn, and providing teachers the tools and the resources that they need once they get back into those classrooms.
Thank you. Alex Gates.
Yes, I think this is a great question. I've spoken with several parents that have expressed frustration with not really being able to understand the funding model and how it works from school to school to school. I've also talked to many voters who are very concerned about the top-heavy nature of our school district. Lots of money being spent at the top, and then we're not seeing a lot in the schools. I know firsthand the effect of having many portables outside of a school and the effect that that can have on the school community. I think students that are forced to be out in these portables are a little cut off from the school and the school culture that way. I also have concerns about safety with these, and thankfully, we haven't had any major issues with these portables. But the construction of them, it's just not up to the same quality, obviously, as schools are. And so I would like to do everything possible to make sure that we're not putting kids in portables in the back of the schools. To me, it's unacceptable, but I get that, you know, that's the nature that we're dealing with. I want to make sure that the dollars are spent correctly in the right place, and I want to make sure that all students have a very safe and effective place to learn. And as your school board representative, I will listen to voters, I will listen to teachers, and I will work hand in hand with the other board members to make sure that's happening.
Thank you. Carol Crachee.
Well, I have a lot of experience, I have some experience with portables. The year that Central High was under renovation, we had 25 portables on the football field, and I spent one year teaching from the portable, which wasn't all bad, actually, except that I had large classes, and the portables are not designed for 30 grown adults like I was teaching at Central High, just physically to accommodate them. However, I know in many of the elementary schools, the teachers like teaching in the portables. They feel like they're kind of free from outside observance sometimes, and that they are quite comfortable teaching there. A lot of these portables will be eliminated with the bond issue, probably not all, because our populations tend to move around a lot, and you never know from one time to the next how many people you're going to need in each given school. But I think the bond issue will go a long way in resolving some of that.
Thank you. Ben Pearlman.
Well, I'm not sure that money is the most critical aspect of alleviating overcrowding. As Carol alluded to, the bond issue that's upcoming will primarily be used to build two new high schools. Having grown up in Omaha and known the population as it's moved southward over the last 25 years, I do agree that there's a real need for a new high school in South Omaha. I'm not convinced, as of yet, that there's a need for a high school in the northwest part of town. You know, Benson is underpopulated as it is now. Northwest is making great strides in what they're doing, and I would love to see the district focus, if we're talking about high schools, focus on doing everything they can to support those schools. But if there's one issue that I know Nebraskans and people in Omaha have been concerned with for as long as I can remember, it's property taxes. Omaha Public Schools budget is up almost 30% over the last five years alone, and half of that funding comes directly from our property taxes. And there's no question that is unsustainable. And with lawmakers in Lincoln, when they come back in January, they're going to be focused squarely on tax relief, property tax relief, and we need to make sure that it doesn't come at the expense of funding schools in Omaha.
Thank you. Here's our next question. What will you do to curb violence in our schools? And we'll start with Ricky Smith.
Well, one of the things that I think that we really need to do is to work a little bit closer with our students, our parents, and the SROs who are in the buildings to kind of get them prepared and trained for those things. But once you build up the students and they start to realize that they are more than just a number, more than just statistics, and they start to believe in themselves, you can change some of those things. We already have policy in place to address bullying and those types of things, and so it's a matter of changing the culture of the school and changing the environment completely. I believe that we do have some things in place, especially with the cameras and those kind of things that are going to be going into some of the schools to create that safe environment. But I also think that the teachers need some additional training just to be able to take care of their classrooms in case we have an active shooter. Those kind of things, they happen, and unfortunately, kids have been targeted or teachers have lost their lives saving other students. And so we have to be mindful of those things. This is an issue where we don't want to be reactive, but we want to be proactive. So having that policy in place, walking through the different things that we need to do to engage students and engage parents on changing the culture of violence and how we can work together is going to be a key component. I believe that we should also be very, very mindful and invite those outside agencies who are experts in this area. So you have programs like the Urban League of Nebraska. You have programs that work with students who are at-risk, high-risk students, and they have those mentors in place to help them get through trouble issues and tough issues.
Thank you. Alex Gates.
Yeah, I agree that this is a cultural issue that we have in that we, you know, we need to have schools that feel like they're safe, that feel welcoming, that feel where students can relax and feel comfortable to learn. I'm wary of efforts that would institutionalize our schools with metal detectors or things that would make it feel like they're walking through an airport security instead of going into school. And I think those are very reactionary actions to take for school violence. You know, we need to make sure that our teachers are culturally competent. They have cultural competency training, that they're aware of restorative justice techniques that work inside the classrooms to help quell, you know, tempers and things that come up. I've spent the last four years building strong parent-teacher organizations in Omaha Public Schools, and I know the impact that strong PTAs and PTOs can have in a school. And so as a board member, what I would do is I would push four ways to provide more support and tools and training for PTAs and PTOs across Omaha Public Schools to build up that community so that we have not only supported teachers and parents and administrators inside buildings, but students know that their families are very much part of this. Public schools weave the fabric of society, right? And PTAs and PTOs are very, very instrumental in helping that.
Thank you. Carol Crachee.
Well, I think for the most part, our schools are safe. Not that there isn't any room for improvement. I'm sure there is. I don't want to have airport-style security either. I never wanted to feel like I was teaching in an armed camp of some kind. But it is a cultural thing. We have to teach our students, we have to teach our parents about nonviolence, and we also have to, we have trainings, we have regular drills in the schools about what to do in any given situation. And so the teachers are required by law to know what these procedures are and to be able to put their students into as safe a situation as possible. As I say, there is training, but there are more training, more cultural responsibility about the culture of nonviolence is something we all need to learn.
Thank you. Ben Pearlman.
Well, I agree that there definitely needs to be a fine balance between maintaining order in a classroom while also not kicking students out at the rate that we've seen in OPS recently. Last year, more than 10,000 students were suspended or expelled, and that's something that obviously needs to be addressed as quickly as possible. With my work as a prosecutor, we are always looking for alternative ways to find justice, and some of that stuff can definitely translate into the classroom. One of those solutions is to make sure that we have a workforce in Omaha Public Schools that represents the communities that are within Omaha Public Schools. And so having teachers, staffs, and principals that reflect the community that is within Omaha Public Schools, I think, can go a long way to help alleviate some of these problems. I also agree with the solutions that have been implemented recently by the Omaha Public School Board, most notably from Mark Snow, that will hopefully reduce dramatically the number of citations in the school. And what I mean by that is for misdemeanors, there's no longer going to be citations and arrests made, for the most part, rather referrals to the county attorney's office for prosecution in juvenile court, which, for the most part, is the appropriate solution to these things that normally didn't have police presence.
Thank you. Amanda Ryan.
I have really been looking at restorative justice techniques as well. There is a school in Texas, I believe, that has implemented them when there are behavioral issues in the classroom, and that really helps to build a relationship and come down to the students' level, and making sure that we're not feeding into the school-prison pipeline, which we know disproportionately affects our students of color. And so it's really making sure that we look at these different techniques for discipline and reaction to behavioral issues. It's making sure we don't set up our schools, as others have mentioned, as like an institution, and making them feel like the students are on edge when they enter the school. Schools should be nurturing places where people and students go to feel safe, to learn, and to open their minds. So those are some of the things. Also with teachers, making sure they have cultural competency trainings that are ongoing, not just one thing that you hit on your professional development checklist. And having a very close mentoring relationship with their students. Students that have teachers that are involved with their lives fare better, and they just have a great relationship, and they remember those teachers from years to come. And so really making sure that our teachers have the ability to do that and form those relationships, and that we give them that leeway to do that.
Thank you. Here's our next question. What should be done to ensure teacher retention, particularly of experienced teachers? And we'll start with Alex Gates.
Yeah, so there are several things. Number one, we need to make sure that teachers are being respected and their voices are being heard, and that we have a great relationship with teachers from the board. I know that as a board, we're at separate ends of the bargaining table there, but teachers, we need to understand that they have, you know, a wealth of experience in the classroom. They know we need to put faith in teachers to give us feedback, and we need to actively move on that feedback. For teachers that have been here for 10, 15 years, they're also really instrumental in making sure that the new teachers that come on board can adopt the culture of OPS and also turn into great experienced teachers like that. And so not only do we need to make sure that, you know, that they're given a seat at the table and that we're listening to them, we need to give them respect. We need to make sure that they're paid competitive wages. I know personally two teachers that were in my daughter's schools that left OPS. One went to a neighboring district, and the other one just went and got a job outside of teaching. Those two teachers made tremendous impacts on my daughter's education, and I'm so thankful that they had them, that they were able to teach my daughters. But I am sad that they're not able to be teaching next class and next class and next class, future generations. So it's very important, teachers have the respect and that they're given the tools and resources to do their job effectively.
Thank you. Carol Crachee.
Well, a couple of things come to mind. One, of course, is the salary schedule, and it has to be set up in a way that is fair to all levels of teachers, those with years and years of experience and the beginners. Too often in the past... Too often in the past, the district has tried to put the emphasis on the bottom of the salary schedule, hiring new people, which I know is an issue. But if you want to retain those experienced teachers, you've got to give them some reason to stay. That might mean giving those teachers, some of the veteran teachers, different responsibilities. Instead of spending their entire day in the classroom, maybe they could spend part of their day mentoring a younger teacher and serving on district committees that work on different issues. And teachers, of course, like, well, respect, of course, but they like the independence to be able to teach the way they want to. A lot of people feel like the "no child left behind" tied them to testing instead of allowing them to make education fun.
Thank you. Ben Pearlman.
Well, I'll say, you know, Carol's been in the classroom for a long time, so I, of course, would echo a lot of what she said. She's spot on with her comments. We not only need to attract the best teachers we can, we also need to do everything we can to retain them. And that means, I'm sure we'll hear up and down this panel here, that we need teachers' input on every decision that is made in the classroom, and that's what I'd bring to the board. I just don't see any other way of doing business as a board member. So when we talk about retaining teachers, of course, it'd be a competitive salary, showing them the respect that they deserve within each building, but also giving them the task of asking them whenever there are changes that are needed in the classroom because they are the experts in education, they are in the classroom every day, and so they're the natural choice to turn to whenever there's new things that need to be developed, new policies for the schools, for things that are impacting education within the classroom.
Thank you. Amanda Ryan.
Once again, just making sure that our teachers really do have a seat at that table when we're discussing different policy issues and procedures that we're going to be putting into place, but not just asking them at the last step before we take it to the public, but making sure they're involved in the entire process. Competitive salaries for those teachers that have been there to retain them and benefits, but also making sure that when it's not just something, the policy or procedures that are coming into place, but if they have an issue within their building, whether it's like with administration or other teachers, that we're actually listening to them and going to deal with the problem instead of bypassing it and just kind of skirting over the issue with Band-Aid solutions. So really just making sure that our teachers have a voice and that we're going to serve as advocates for them if they don't have that voice. Also giving them the creativity to manage their classrooms the best way that they can because they know how each student learns and every student is different, so they know how to manage their classrooms, they've been formally taught on that. And so really trusting them with their education and knowing that we hired the best teachers that we can.
Thank you. Ricky Smith.
Thank you. So also being a candidate that is endorsed by the Omaha Education Association, I know that the thing that echoes most to me is ask a teacher, ask a teacher, ask a teacher. They have to be at the table when these things are being discussed. The pay scale, it needs to be looked at, and if there are some things that we can do to provide teachers, not just additional professional development, but ways that they can mentor and do some internal things in order to build the skill sets of upcoming teachers or those teachers who may not be as experienced. We have to really look at the value that we have in the educational system and the value that the teachers bring to the table. They are the resource, they are our key resource. Without teachers, we don't move. Without teachers, our kids don't learn. And so without them at the table, we're losing. And so just being able to acknowledge teachers is enough. Checking on the principals and the administrators and asking, you know, how are your teachers doing when they hear that these policies are coming down or they hear that these things are being implemented and they didn't have a voice? What is it that we can do better as a board to make sure that they are at the table? And so it is that communication piece, and it's acknowledging their efforts, and it's being there to support them when they have those long days and those long nights. And also trying to provide some additional resources, if at all possible, to do some training where they don't have to come out of pocket. So if we can support those things and build better teachers, we build a better school system.
Thank you. New question. The district has talked of plans for a new bond issue, including building new high schools. Do you agree a bond issue is needed? And if yes, when should it go before the voters? And we'll start with Carol Creji.
I do think the bond issue is needed. I know from experience that being in a comfortable classroom makes all the difference in the world. When Central got air conditioning, I was like, wow, I didn't know the first week of school could be productive. I was so used to sweating it out. So I know all of those things really do matter. The question, of course, is when? And next year is a little sparse on big elections. The only big election coming up next year is the mayoral election. And it does cost the district less to have a referendum if they're putting it on to, tagging it on to another election. But if they're going to do that in May, then they're really going to have to jump on it and decide where they're going with that. If they don't do it in May, then chances are they're going to have to wait another year and a half or more before a new bond issue's done.
Thank you. Ben Pearlman.
Well, right now, I'm undecided on whether or not a new bond is needed, and I honestly feel like it'd be intellectually dishonest to feel any other way because I don't think anyone here on this panel has had an opportunity to dig into the details of the new bond. So without knowing exactly what's going to be asked for and spent, there's no way that I could support it. But that being said, there are definite needs, and those needs are what I believe are going to be addressed by a bond issue. That being primarily a new high school in South Omaha, there's no question that there's a need there. Like I said earlier, I do want to see more details about the need for second high school out in northwest Omaha, and it may turn out that there is a need. I've spoken with principals in the area and students and families, and there's a definite desire by a lot of folks who live out there for that. So definitely not opposed to it, but at this point, being a candidate for the school board, I simply am not in a position to either say either way. As for the timing, I do know that it would be definitely to the district's advantage to have the vote during next spring's elections and the city elections. I feel that if it is a one-issue election, yes or no on the bond, the district would have a much more difficult time convincing voters, especially considering that when the legislature reconvenes, we may see that the state is facing a huge financial deficit. So if there is going to be a new bond, I would be supportive of having it in the spring election.
Thank you. Amanda Ryan.
Like Ben, I want to see more details. We haven't been privy to all the information that the board members would have before putting that in front of the public, so it is kind of impossible to say 100% I want this. But there are huge needs, and we do need to make sure that our classrooms are manageable sizes, that all of the infrastructure is up to date, that we continue to improve upon the schools that we already have, making sure that all of our updates are taken care of. As far as timing, I want to, before you put that in front of the public, you really have to make sure that everything's flushed out. They need to know where their money's going to be spent and how it's going to be spent. And we also need to be able to gain their trust and make sure that the OPS as an institution has great community trust. I think with the hiccups that we've had at the beginning of this school year, that public image has gone down and people are upset. That goes back to communication with our community members, with our parents, with our teachers, in a variety of issues, whether it's bus, with comprehensive sex ed, with our transgender student policies, all of that. The community wants more communication, they want more transparency, and we need to build upon that before we can really start asking them for more money. So that's my stance on that.
Thank you. Ricky Smith.
Well, I think it's a good idea for us to start looking at some new schools, especially with our population constantly growing. It was mentioned before, the mobility of our students and kids are being transferred all over, and it's because the schools are busting at the seams. We also just talked about teachers and what would be good for teachers. You want to attract teachers, you put them in a brand-new building where everything is going to work and they can have a smart board and they have the technology that they need, and we don't have to put them in a portable and rebuild and displace the students. Those kind of things, it makes your district attractive. I also want to make sure that the supports are in place for Benson High School so they don't begin to lose the population of students, especially with the academies and the things that they have going on. It's a valuable resource right there in that Benson community. The kids are learning trades and there are phenomenal teachers that are at Benson High School. I actually worked there for two years, and so I know that environment. I'm very proud of the things that Benson High School does, and I would hate to do anything that would draw from their population and end up having us in a situation where we have to work harder to recruit students to come back to their home schools and their area schools. But this also gives us an opportunity to be proactive. So if we start the planning now, we can begin to contact contractors and get those lower bids and see what it is we can do in order to be fiscally responsible. And then also knowing the fact that maybe we can come in and ask the voters for a lower amount of money versus being at a top end, a high, high number, and get some things done, that's going to help our district.
Thank you. Alex Gates.
Yes, so when we originally discussed the bond, we looked at the needs assessment and how much we needed to do. And we knew that that's why we had to split it in two, that we couldn't go all in one. So without a doubt, I understand that there are still school buildings that need updates. We still have tremendous need based on overcrowding, the number of portals that are there, aging infrastructure, things like that. Edison Elementary is my neighborhood school, and it opened in 1963. And beyond the new library makeover that we had maybe sometime in the late 80s, that's really about it. When parents asked me whether or not they should support the bond issue, because Edison wasn't getting a new school, I said, absolutely. I said, because if this one doesn't pass, we're never going to be able to come in with round two to get the updates that we need in ours. And unfortunately, that's just the fact that we're dealing with right now. We have tremendous amount of work that needs to be done. We couldn't do it all in one go, but we need to finish the job. But along with that, we need to make sure that we have plans to keep our buildings maintained and to make sure that they don't crumble, and so we're not in another situation like this down the road where we have a tremendous amount of work to do and we simply have to ask so much out of our voters. As far as timing goes, I think we first need to show the public that we're listening to them. I think we need to show them that we're holding the administration accountable. I think we need to earn the trust of the public before we ask them to make another investment. I think a timing issue, May of next year, might be a little rough. We've got a lot of things to rebuild, but I absolutely would support a bond issue. We needed an OPS.
Thank you. Here's our last question. OPS got some good news with improved test scores in reading and math in 2015. What is needed to keep improving? And we'll start with Ben Pearlman.
Well, we need to just keep the focus on the areas that need it. The new AQuest plan that has targeted schools that have consistently underperforming schools are the ones that we're focused on, and we saw drastic improvement at schools like Druid Hill with improvements across the board. And I think that by focusing our resources on places that need it most, like Druid Hill, I think that we can show to the public that public schools can be innovative, can do things that need to be done in order to build the trust and confidence back in our public schools. OPS has shown over the last couple of years that they can be very innovative. Schools like Wakanda, Howard Kennedy, and the Wilson Focus School are trying out things that really have never been done in Omaha before. And I'd like to see as much of that type of innovation as we can do in Omaha because I am firmly opposed to charter schools, tax credit scholarships, and voucher programs that are being pushed in this state that will drain tax money from our public schools and will really do some damage to the public schools and Omaha public schools in particular. So I'd like to see a continued emphasis on focusing on the schools, not just in my sub-district, but in schools all across Omaha that need the attention and that are, quite frankly, getting it. I love the innovation, and I'd love to see more of that.
Thank you. Amanda Ryan.
We need to continue to push to close these achievement gaps and making sure that our students all have access to opportunities to make sure that they're getting the best education that they can. So that is making sure that all of our curriculums are up to date, whether that is history and science, technology, language arts, making sure that our students are retaining the information and not just learning it for their tests. I think that is huge. I know that UNO has kind of lowered their admission standards, and we need to make sure that that's not happening, that they can take students from Omaha public schools and they can admit them in college, and those students are going to be successful. So we need to make sure that they are learning the best that they can and that they have textbooks and curriculums that reflect who they are so that they're seeing themselves in their histories in front of them, and they're not just learning about one specific thing that we, that they have been learning, that we all have learned over the course of our schooling. So that's something that I think we can improve upon that will help our students learn and achieve better.
Thank you. Ricky Smith.
Yes, so the thing that I've been running on is higher expectations in education and no longer giving our students the permission to fail. And when I say permission to fail, students can pass and walk across the stage and graduate with a 1.0 grade point average. That's permission to fail because they can't fill out a job application, and they can't get into a college or university with those grades if they aren't ready without having to take remedial classes. And so higher expectations in education is key. One thing that we need to do, in seeing that the test scores have risen, is acknowledge that that comes from the work that the teachers are doing. That's the, the teachers are engaging the students, the teachers have found ways to enlighten them and really pull them into that educational component, and the curriculum is working. And so we need to acknowledge the work that the teachers are doing, and then also acknowledge that it comes from the principals. So those principals supporting the teachers in those buildings, we are creating communities and environments where our kids can learn, and it's evident when you see those test scores. But there's also things that are not measured in a test score, and it's the relationship that teachers are building with the students, it's relationships that teachers are building with parents. And so parents are trusting us and trusting the teachers more in the educational process. And so when you do that, things start to come together. Something else that we can do to support this and to keep it going in the right direction is we have to get behind early childhood learning so that way our kids start off on the right foot and they're not two or three years behind as they're going into kindergarten. Let's make sure that they're ready, and those are the things that we need to get behind on a regular basis. We want them to start strong and finish stronger.
Thank you. Alex Gates.
This is a great question. I'm glad that we've seen test scores improve, but I'll tell you, the way that we can really do a better job is to have less focus on these tests. We need to have, we need to make sure that students have enough time for recess. They need to have time for art, music, and theater. They need healthy lunches. They need more learning and curiosity about learning. And when we create those environments where the students are excited and happy and want to learn and we're less focused on these tests and these tests, I'm telling you, they take tests, they take tests to predict how those tests will go, and they take tests to predict how those tests that predict the tests will go. And I'm not even kidding you. This focus on testing is ruining, you know, is having great, great, making great damage to our students. So what we need to do is we need to stop worrying about that hyper-focus on testing. We need to make sure that our schools are creating curious and excited learners. When we have the right environment, we will naturally improve. Our scores will go up. I think when we're looking at other countries and comparing ourselves to other countries, they're not sitting around stressing about these tests. They're sitting around talking about what is the best environment that our kids can learn in? Are there too many kids in a classroom? Are we putting them outside in portables? Do they have an opportunity to fully eat their lunch? Do they have enough time to get outside and get some recess? Can they learn about music or science or computers? Things like this that's curious for them. That's what we need to do, and that's how we're going to see tremendous improvement, not just small incremental improvements on our test scores. We'll see tremendous improvement across the board.
Thank you. Carol Creji.
Well, I think the huge, and it is statistically huge, raise in some of the test scores is a wonderful, exciting thing. And that's what we need to do now, is figure out why those scores improve so much in those schools and those grade levels, and try to take those techniques and send them to other schools. So we need to use those teachers to teach other teachers about their innovative techniques. This also means that we need principals that create the right atmosphere for teachers to innovate and try new things. Somebody mentioned high expectations, and that was always a big deal at Central High, was we always had high expectations for everyone. And I think that's part of the reason why Central has, over the years, been very successful as a high school, inner-city high school. We also need to work on relationships between teachers and parents and the parent and parental involvement. Early childhood education is a must, and we need to watch class size at all levels.
Thank you. Now it's time for our closing statements. Each candidate will get one minute, and we'll begin with Amanda Ryan.
Once again, thank you guys for all being here and for people watching at home and later on YouTube. Just in preparation for the general election, I've been out during the week and on the weekends with my friends and volunteers just the weekend, on the weekends, with my friends and volunteers, just knocking on doors and getting the feedback from the people that I'm going to be representing. And I want to make sure that I'm constantly listening to those people, to those teachers, and to the students. So that's just really my dedication to this, and a lot of what has been driving me is that I have had great public school teachers throughout my entire career, and as I get into college and beyond, they always push me, and I want to make sure that we have those teachers for our students, and that's a big motivating reason why I'm running. So if you guys want to find out more about me, I have a Facebook page, which is Amanda Ryan for OPS, and my website is ryanforops.com. You can always find out more information there.
Thank you. Ricky Smith.
I mentioned higher expectations in education. And so when you raise those expectations, kids will rise to them. As a community, we have to support our educators, and we have to support our students. Parents, we have to get more actively engaged, and utilize those supports in order to make sure our kids are successful. Introduce them to the trades early. Introduce them to being firefighters and police officers. We need those things in our community. I want our children to be able to graduate from high school and be college and career-ready. With over 20 years' experience in working with teachers, I have a great dynamic in school buildings, with principals, with advisors, counselors, and the actual educators who are in there fighting the fight for our kids every single day. And I want to continue to be that voice. I'm here, I'm working hard, I'm dedicated, I've been here for 20 years, and you deserve better. We can become a better school district with the right people in place. On November 8th, vote Ricky Smith, Omaha Public School Board, Sub-District 1. The candidate from your community, for your community.
Thank you. Alex Gates.
Yeah. Thanks again for the opportunity to participate. I want to be very clear that this campaign is not about me. It's about our community. It's about the 52,000 students at OPS, their families, and the 7,000 teachers and staff members who deserve meaningful ways to participate in our public school system. Public support for our public schools is incredibly important. This election is extremely important. I'm not running for the board as a stepping stone to higher office. My focus is on OPS. My history, my experience volunteering in OPS schools leading up to the decision to run, sets me apart from my opponent, very clearly shows you where my intentions are and what I want to do. I hope you'll take a look at my experience and active history in OPS when casting your vote in November, but I also want to hear from you. Go to my website, gatesforops.com. I'm also on Facebook, @gatesforops. I want to hear from you. Let's have a cup of coffee, we'll chat. I hope to earn your vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol Creji.
Well, a couple of things. When I taught, I taught history and American government, so I've always been very interested in politics. And running for a school board, I think, is sort of a natural extension of that. The, and if you combine that with my experience working with the Teachers Association at local, state, and national levels, I have lots of ideas that I can bring into the system. I have experience writing curriculum, I have experience developing evaluation systems. I'm very strong on, because I'm an ex-teacher, I believe the teacher should be involved in almost everything. And, and that's one of the things I hear from the board right now. They're always talking about, oh, who they asked about various things, and very frequently, their list of who they asked didn't include the teachers.
Thank you. And Ben Pearlman.
Well, once again, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for inviting all of us here to talk about our campaigns. I would just close by saying that I have had a long history of being involved in Omaha Public Schools, long before I decided to run for a seat on Omaha Public Schools. I attended, in fact, almost 20 years ago, all of the meetings that were conducted around Omaha, when the dramatic changes to busing took place. I think that was in either '96 or '97. I've been a PTA member going on 10 years. I have children in Omaha Public Schools. What I can tell you is that I am definitely not using the Omaha Public School Board as a stepping stone to higher office. I have no intention, I've never intended to run for public office until I saw that there was a need. I'm the only candidate in my race who ever stepped foot as a student in Omaha Public Schools, and I think there's tremendous value in that. I would also tell voters that some of the focuses, again, that I have is accountability, communication, and if you'd like to learn more, I put most of my information on Facebook to learn more.
Thank you very much. The League of Women Voters would like to thank all our candidates for participating this evening. And we'd also like to remind you again that the League of Women Voters never supports or opposes political parties or candidates. The forum has been solely for voter education. You can find some of our other forums that we've done for the election season by going to our website at omahalwv.org. And if you have suggestions for our programs, because we will be doing other topics, public policy issues when the election season is over, you can email us at omahalwv@gmail.com, or at govoteomaha@gmail.com. We have a couple of other forums that we will be recording, and we're doing the State Board of Education, and for the Douglas County Bond Issue, we will be doing a program on that as well. So for the League of Women Voters, I'm Jerry Simon, reminding you to inform yourself about the issues and the candidates, and on November 8th, go vote Omaha.